So she shared some theories about why she thought it was hit, why others in her family who are now also sitting in the room thought it had been hit. And they gave similar answers and ISIS truck was maybe passing by or, you know, on the roof, there was a tannure, an oven that was used to make bread that burned on a much cheaper oil that burned really deeply. Maybe they saw the heat from the sky. And in my own head, as she's saying this, I'm just thinking, is that the thing that was redacted coming from the target? But I didn't say anything about that.
Is that perhaps why they thought it was a weapons manufacturing site?
Possibly. So it was about an hour and a half into our conversation before I finally told her that I have this American document that I had sued my own government to get it. And she's changed. She's perked up. She's very interested. She, she wants to know what's in it. So the document says that there was a compound they wanted to target. And I told her that before striking, they saw three children on the roof. And her whole face changed. She said the kids would go on the roof when they got cold.
They didn't have gas, so they would just go upstairs to get exposed to sunlight.
I'm curious, as you ended that interview and you walked away, did you think to yourself, this was the right decision to tell her what really happened? What the US knew that they had seen those three children? That they had known those children would die? Or did you wonder to yourself if you shouldn't have ever told them?
She said something to me that made me feel comfortable with her. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that you took this. So I told her before I left, I genuinely, I'll remember this always, thank you. That I would never forget this interview. And she said it was the same for her.
I thank you actually. I will also never forget this interview.
And that she was so grateful that we spoke. I hated asking her those questions. I felt awful for asking, but I think I also felt really angry that my own government wasn't doing this, that I had to do it.
Then you had to give her this life-changing information.
It's not my job, or at least it shouldn't be. And at some point, it should be the military's job to do this. And certainly, the military in recent years especially has made little to no effort to try to talk to people on the ground to see how these rules of war actually play out. You know, that you can make a decision about something being proportional, but what if your intelligence is wrong? I hated asking her those questions. I didn't want to do it, but I just, I wanted to know what happened. And if I didn't, who would?
Right, it almost seems like despite the military's claims that it wants to hold itself accountable when it kills civilians, these reports you've obtained, which are in theory so central to doing that, are really only giving the appearance of accountability. Because real accountability would mean doing the kind of work that you're doing, and the US is not.
A former high-level official who used to be involved in the air campaign told me that it was also meant for those on the inside, basically to give them psychological comfort to think that, hey, mistakes happen, but we've gone through this process. We're holding ourselves accountable, something that might also make them feel better. So I can't tell you what each individual officer thought as they did each assessment, but I can say that overall, what these documents show is that the military hasn't prioritized accountability in a meaningful way.
Asmat, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael.
Asmat Khan has written about the American air war against ISIS for the past four years.
The Daily is supported by Athena Health, creating connected healthcare technology designed to improve patient outcomes and increase efficiency of healthcare practices and organizations at athenahealth.com. And by Baird. As an employee-owned financial firm, Baird offers advice solely focused on clients' needs while consistently investing in their expertise and capabilities to serve those needs. More information at BairdDifference.com. And by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/theDaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobaro. See you tomorrow.
Hi, I'm Mary Louise Kelly. What do your afternoons look like? Wherever you are, whatever you're doing, All Things Considered from NPR News is there. You can catch up while working out, hear a mix of news and stories while mixing up dinner, and you can travel the world with stories that take you there, even if you are stuck in traffic. All Things Considered, listen every afternoon.
That's All Things Considered from 4 to 6 on Radio IQ every weekday.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington.
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for January the 18th, 2022 is hereby called to order. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Bestfitch? He's here. Mr. Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and according to present. Tonight, I'm pleased to recognize one of our school board members and a youth director at the Garden of Pride Number Seven Vision of Faith Ministries, the Reverend Michael L. Cherry, who will lead us in an invocation tonight. And I'll follow him with leading you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cherry.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, before we ask you for anything, Father, we just want to thank you for everything. Thank you for every citizen in the city of Roanoke, Virginia. Continue to grant our citizens strength during these unprecedented times. Thank you, God, for your keeping power during these uncertain times. And God, most importantly, during these uncertain times, we thank you for these city leaders who have the boldness and the courage to lead this great city during these times. Lord, you said in your word that let every person be subject to the governing authorities. For there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. So, Lord, you instituted this. You established the seat for them in this hour. So now, I humbly ask, Father, to be with our mayor, our vice mayor, and our city council. Continue to give them wisdom, patience, and understanding to know that there's power in partnership and value in variety. Be in the midst of this meeting as they conduct the business of our city. Let there be great synergy in the room tonight. Lord, we ask these things. In your name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Thank God. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And thank you, Mr. Cherry. Welcome, everybody, to our second session of today. And I think the first order of business will be us coming out of closed session. So I want to ask someone to offer that motion.
I move, with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certify to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters are, as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
Thank you. Been moved in second? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Excuse me.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch? Oh, he was not in that meeting. We get to us.
For some reason, he's unmuting. Unmuting, but nothing's coming through.
There we go. Nope.
There's no audio.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee? Okay, he raised his hand. Okay.
Did you call me, ma'am clerk?
Yes, Mayor Lee. Okay.
All right. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Tonight, our first order of business on our agenda is public hearings. There's a request of Franklin Road LLC to vacate an alley running north from Franklin Road Southwest towards Luck Avenue Southwest, adjacent to property located at 117 Franklin Road Southwest. Dave Jones, agent, is the spokesperson. Well, the planning commission continued this matter until Monday, February 14th, at 1:30 PM in the council chamber. Therefore, council does not have any jurisdiction to hear this matter at this time. Our second request of the Greater Roanoke Transit Company to vacate a 10-foot-wide alley between and parallel to 11th Street Southeast and 12th Street Southeast. Kevin Price is the general manager and the spokesperson. The planning commission has also continued this matter until Monday, February 14th, 2022, at 1:30 PM in the council chamber. Therefore, city council does not have any jurisdiction to hear this matter at the time. Item number three is the request of 829 Salem Avenue LLC to rezone property located at 829 Salem Avenue Southwest from light industrial district to urban flex district to be used as a mixed-use building. John Garland, manager, is the spokesperson. Is John here?
He is not here.
Okay. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to rezone certain property located at 829 Salem Avenue Southwest from I-1 Light Industrial District to UF Urban Flex District, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Please note that the city planning commission approved this matter on a 6-0 vote. And is there anybody that's here to speak on this issue?
The planning commission agent, I can answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, has any citizen signed up to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
All right. Well, with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments, questions, or... Councilor McCall.
Thank you. Wayne, you might be able to answer this for me. Can you tell me what an urban flex district is? And, and just a little bit about the change from light industrial to urban flex?
All right, so a great example of urban flex would be found over in Wasina, the former Ice House Building. A lot of that property, from the Green Goat to the Wasina City Tap Room, was zoned I-1. We wanted to go in and allow a variety of uses, even more than would be allowed in I-1. And so we started using the urban flex zoning district. And it allows that mixed use, allows residential mixed in with some of those commercial properties. And in this case, that's also what we're seeing here. I'll point out that our downtown plan that was finished in 2017 called for actually taking some of this area west of downtown that is I-1 zoned and adjusting it to be urban flex as well. And so although we haven't done that in a large map amendment yet, this is a individual property owner asking for that.
Thank you.
Is there anywhere by, in the restaurant over there somewhere? It's been a while since I've been in that neighborhood.
Over in, back to Wasina?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a restaurant, Climbing Jim Apartments in that old Ice House Building. And then, you know, down the road, you have the Green Goat, where the former, the Transportation Museum used to be located down by the river. So a lot of change that started there with that rezoning.
All right. Thank you. All right. No further questions from council. Madam Clerk, we ready to call the roll?
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number four is the request of the Roanoke City School Board to amend the institutional plan, unit development plan, as part of a previous rezoning at 3601 Fern Cliff Avenue Northwest, adopted by ordinance number 38623-092109. Amendments include changes in use of particular buildings, an additional support building, and parking. Jack Ellamwood, Parker Design Group Incorporated, is the agent spokesperson. Is Mr. Ellamwood here? Okay. All right. We have one measure and ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to amend the institutional plan, unit development, INPUD Development Plan, previously adopted under ordinance number 38613-092109 on September 21st, 2009, as it pertains to property located at 3601 Fern Cliff Avenue Northwest, bearing official tax map number 6460102, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. It must be noted that the city planning commission approved on a 5-0 vote this matter. Mr., if Mr. Ellamwood has any comments, so he's welcome to come forward. But if not, he can answer questions. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? Madam Clerk?
No, no citizens.
Okay. I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they got any questions or comments.
Mayor, I just have one question for Mr. Perkins, if I could ask him. And I'm just asking, sis, you just came out in the weather just to be here. No, just kidding. No, my question is, and I know there probably was no opposition to it, but were the planning commission, where it was discussed in the work session, it mentioned the outreach to the community was recommended. Was that outreach performed? And if so, where was it?
Yes, it was, ma'am. We conducted, along with our strategic plan, questions for the community, and we received responses from the community on that. Because having ROTEC in that area to increase our career and technical education for specifically William Fleming High School was very important to our future strategic planning. And that was put out through that process. It was a survey put out to parents and community members.
So was it done in the area along all the way in Fern Cliff? Did you talk with the residents?
It was done for the entire city. It was done in the, the entire city had the opportunity to.
Oh, the city itself. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Perkins, you do a good job with that mask on. I couldn't tell who you were. Exactly.
Well, I haven't lost my undercover skills from my past jobs.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. No other citizens wishing to be heard. We'll close the public hearing and ask my colleague if they got any questions or comments. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please go ahead and call the roll. Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye. Did you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All right. Item number six is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to consider the lease of the Gil Memorial Property to the Valley's.
I think we have number five to vacate.
Number five? Oh, okay. A request of the Roanoke City School Board to vacate Truman Avenue, a street adjacent to 38, 37 Williamson Road Northwest and Old Williamson Road Northwest, approximately 381 linear feet, running northeast from the intersection of Williamson Road Northwest, ending in a cul-de-sac adjacent to 3901 Williamson Road Northwest. Christopher Perkins, chief operating officer of Roanoke City Public Schools, is the spokesperson. And there is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing a public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke, located on Truman Avenue as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Ms. Perkins is here to answer any questions or comments, so I will open the public hearing. Any speaker sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask my colleague if they have any questions or comments. Hearing none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Item number six is the proposal of the city of Roanoke to consider the lease of the Gil Memorial Property to the Valley's Innovation Council to continue the operation of the regional acceleration and mentoring program. Robert S. Cowell, junior city manager, is the spokesperson. There is a ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement and services agreement with the Roanoke Blacksburg Innovation Network doing business as Valley's Innovation Council for the lease of an approximately 0.1671-acre parcel of city-owned property located at 709 South Jefferson Street Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as Roanoke City Official Tax Map Number 1020510, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'll recognize the city manager. If he has any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll attempt to explain this again. And Mark Nelson and Aaron Burisma are back there as well. They can certainly help add anything that I might miss. But earlier today, I explained, and I'll have to explain in the next item again, a little bit more regarding what seemed to be a somewhat complicated arrangement. The Gil Memorial Building is no less complicated, it feels at times. So just to, just to explain a little bit about this, you all will probably recall that when this project initiated, which houses Ramp, of course, there were, was a need for a number of different roles. One of those roles was fulfilled with Virginia Western Community College, which effectively managed the building, if you will, on our behalf. We own the building. RBTC and VIC basically ran the operation inside of the building, and somebody had to kind of take care of the day-to-day operations, if you will, of the building. There weren't many people lining up for that. And thankfully, Dr. Sandel did choose to do that. And we certainly are very thankful that Virginia Western stepped into that role and served it so well along the way. As we approached the end of this, for a variety of reasons, it was evident that they had opted to say, you know, really, it's time for somebody else to assume this role. Thankfully, VIC, which is the umbrella organization for RBTC, who again has been running the, the program, is very interested in this and assuming that role. And so they are prepared to step into, into that capacity. Really, nothing will change with the operations. Just have one less partner in the, in the building, basically, as we, as we go forward. And again, if you have any other more specific questions, Aaron, who actually is the new executive director at VIC, is here and can talk about any of those questions. And then certainly Mark, who has been with the, the Ramp and the Gil Memorial. Well, he's been with Gil Memorial before there was a Ramp, so, and helping get that set up and everything. So they can certainly answer any specific questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signing to speak up on this?
No citizens.
Okay. We will open, well, we open the public hearing. No citizens wishing to be heard on this matter. So I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleague if they have any comments or questions. Ms. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to totally put Mark and Aaron on the spot here. But I wonder if you all would be willing to come up and just give us an update on the innovation corridor. I know there are a lot of exciting things happening right now. But this is a piece of that. And I think the public, it'd be helpful for them to know some of the great things that are happening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are a number of things that are going on right now. I think probably the most exciting and the one that's gathering the most attention other than Ramp is the IBM Building Project. We are seeking funding from the state to be able to refurbish the building that is located along South Jefferson Street. That would be converted to wet lab space and dry, dry lab space, room be for companies and, and a landing place for Johnson &amp; Johnson as they do the, for their J-Labs program. There are also a couple of different master planning efforts going on right now. The most significant of which is Corelli and Virginia Tech. And I believe the city manager's been a part of that process as well. a part of that process as well. This... For Ramp, this would be excellent. I think so far, as Aaron can attest, the Ramp has graduated over 20 companies. They've created close to 100 jobs. This is something that has really gained momentum, especially over time. When we first started this, we had a big group around the table trying to figure out how we were going to find funding, how we were going to get our footing to do this, and over time, it has really gained momentum and has really taken hold on the community, and not just here, within the county, within Salem, and with Potata County. They really do... They really have done some great work. Give me.
Yeah, just to add, part of the IBM Building will be more support for Ramp, so looking at accelerators from day one of a startup's lifespan through graduating through our accelerator and then on to Johnson &amp; Johnson, to really just set up life science and technology startups to have even a stronger path forward in the city.
One thing I would like to add about the project we're pursuing state funding for is we've had excellent help from... And a lot of support from our delegation, both sides of the aisle, from one side of the region to the other. It's been... They've been very supportive. If we do not get this funding, it will not be from a lack of trying. So, one thing that is a little bit different about the agreement that you have before you is that the agreement with Virginia Western was for five years. This agreement is for three years with options... With two one-year options, should they get to the end of the three years, and there's an opportunity to revisit and take a look where they are, approve, go into another agreement, and then do that again for a second year, so a total of five years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, and thank you all. Thank you, then. Mark is our director of economic development, so it's good to see you. Thank you all. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, being that there aren't any questions or comment anymore from council, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, we're on item number seven, correctly. Okay.
That's correct.
Proposal of the city of Roanoke to consider a lease agreement with Rutherford Properties LLC for city-owned property located at 1 Jefferson Street Southwest and 7 Jefferson Street Southwest to provide office space to a sub-leasee. Our city manager, Robert S. Cowell Jr., is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement with Rutherford Partners LLC for the lease of an approximately 0.1670-acre parcel of city-owned property located at 1 Jefferson Street Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as official tax map number 1010507, and an approximately 0.1158-acre parcel of city-owned property located at 7 South Jefferson Street Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as Roanoke City Official Tax Map Number 1020510, for a term of up to three years, commencing on January 31st, 2022. The provisions of the proposed lease include the payment of rent by the leasee to the city and other consideration, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Thank you. I do recognize the city manager for any comments that he'd like to have.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a follow-up on kind of the items we discussed earlier at your earlier meeting. Whereas the earlier discussions were really moving into motion the final pieces to be able to accommodate the final transfer of ownership, so that the Campbell Court property is owned by the private developer that we're redeveloping it, and then we will take ownership of this building that we're talking about here, which again is the building adjacent to the Wells Fargo Tower and to the Amtrak platform. What this lease is, as I mentioned earlier today, this lease enables the current tenants to remain as tenants in this building for up to the three years. It's anticipated they may vacate sooner than that when they relocate, but this allows them to stay in that location even as we take ownership of the building as we move forward. It does not interfere with our ability to advance on our efforts to be able to redevelop a part of the property for a train station, because the anticipation is that that's still a couple of years away as the rest of these efforts move forward, as we go in this moving... This effort moving forward. Trying to think if there's anything else that I need to cover on this one. Probably not. I think that basically covers what we're doing with this. The lease agreement is with Rutherford Partners, and as I mentioned, the company that's in it is Marsh McLennan, who will actually, in effect, be subleasing from Rutherford in order to make this transaction possible. I do want to... The other thing I did want to say is to thank Laura Carini out of the city attorney's office and Mark Nelson, who... They said a lot of moving parts, and it felt like every time we got somewhere, we had to kind of start back over again, and so they stuck all the way to the end, and it was all the way to the end that we were negotiating this. So feel good with where we are with it. This will keep this company in downtown functioning while construction is underway on the other parts, and really makes it much more likely that they will relocate elsewhere in downtown when everything is ready to go. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the manager? All right. We will go and open the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to speak on this issue?
No citizens to speak.
All right. No citizens... There are no citizens wishing to be heard, therefore we'll close the public hearing. And council members, any comments, questions? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Our last order of business tonight is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to speak tonight?
No, sir. No citizens signed up to speak.
All right. Well, there being no further business to come before the council, the council meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. My angels are with me. I absolutely know it. God wins, but the Democrats have to be held accountable. China has to be held accountable. Antifa and BLM, who terrorized our country for four years, have to be held accountable. Where's BLM? Where are Antifa? Where are they now?